Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council July Meeting. We appreciate everybody being here. Tonight, we are lucky enough to have Executive Director John Black with us that's going to do a presentation on the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority. John, did you have any idea all these people were so interested in the airport?
(laughing).
They're all here to see you, so come on up.
I'll be brief, but I also have Paul Lamb with me tonight, longtime member of the Airport Authority Board, and Saleel Rai, our Deputy Director, right there. I just want to say, first of all, how proud I am to be part of this wonderful community. And, you know, sometimes things really show through, and the airshow was one of those times when, I call it Team Smyrna, really stepped up. And I just, you know, I can't say enough, and I would love to mention every name of all those people on your team that helped us out, but we pulled off a great airshow. It rained a little bit, but that was all right. We were just, Drex and I were just talking about the kids, and that's what it's all about. And that's the big reason we do the airshows, is inspire other people. And I just, I'm here to say thank you tonight for all the town did for the Airport Authority, for this town, for helping us do that. And it's a 50-year tradition in this town. That airshow goes back 50 years. So, we're hoping to do it again in 2021, but with every team, there's a great leader. And we have a great leader in this town. So, on behalf of the Airport Authority and the United States Navy Blue Angels, I'd like to present this to the mayor.
Thank you.[118.42][118.42](applause). Well, I would also like to say it is about team, and we do have a wonderful team. And it's not just the team of the town of Smyrna, it's also about the airport and also about the citizens of this town. We went through quite a bit over the last couple of years, but to see those planes back in the sky flying, and, you know, the one thing that someone said to you, Brian, do you recall what they told you about the airshow in the town of Smyrna?
Mayor, I've heard so much.
Oh, Brian, you should remember these things.
I've slept since then, Mayor.
That we set the bar.
Yes, yes, that was. That was a comment that was made to me by one of the Blue Angel folks that was their support, said from an airshow standpoint that Smyrna sets the bar for them. And I took a lot of pride in having that said to me.
I would agree, and you're right, it takes a lot of people, a lot of people from the town, but a lot of volunteers that helped to put on the show. So, from the town of Smyrna to everyone who was part, and also to our citizens. We know having that many people come in is not always the easiest thing, but we like those people because they come in, they spend money in our town, we don't have to educate their children, we don't have to do any of that. So, they help to keep our tax dollars low. But, John, y'all did a phenomenal job, and being out there when some of the little showers hit, you wouldn't have known there was any problems at all. Y'all did a great job, so thank you for, job well done. Counsel, anything from you all? We're looking forward to them all being back? Thanks.
Mayor, Chaplain's here.
Oh, good, thanks. We will move into our meeting agenda, and I will call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Chaplain Warren from the Smyrna Police Department to do our prayer, and Randy Richardson, Randy? Oh, there we go, is going to do our pledge. If everyone will stand with us, please.
Let us bow together. Our Father, our Lord and Savior, we come together tonight to bow before you to give you thanks, to thank you for this day of your blessings that you have given unto us. We ask tonight that you would grant wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to this council that you have assembled to take care of the business of Smyrna. O Father, continue to endow them with the strength that they need in the decision-making to make all of the right choices for the community. And we'll always be mindful, Lord, to say, turn around and say thank you for blessing us in such a manner, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Chaplain, Randy. Ms. Diane, roll call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Miss Mann.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. Item three is approval or corrections of the minutes of the June 11th and June 27th, 2019 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
In order, Mayor.
Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Item four is Correspondence and Communications. Anything tonight, Brian?
None at this time, Mayor.
Awards and recognition. Tonight, we have our Art Crawl winners with us. And for those of you who don't know, this was the Fourth Depot District Art Crawl. It was held on June the 8th. Grant funds from the Tennessee Arts Commission helped to put on this event. It was our largest attendance yet, and we had over 200 pieces of art displayed with 60 artists who participated. We have three of the winners with us here tonight. Raquel, will you come down front with me and help me present these?
Yes, that's right, Raquel. So, we had four different divisions. We had adult, middle school, elementary, and high school. And our first winner is Randy Richardson in the adult category, and this is Randy's piece.
Thank you.
Congratulations.[422.44][422.44](applause). Tell us a little bit about why you chose to participate or your artwork.
Well, I'm part of the, excuse me, I'm getting emotional, so bear with me. I'm part of the Smyrna Art League, the co-op, and we have a meeting tonight if any other artists here in the group that want to join us. But I was pleased to be part of that cooperative, and I've been, you know, working with them for the last couple of years, I think, and fortunate enough to win the award this year, so hope to continue producing art. And I live in Murfreesboro, but I'm part of the Murfreesboro Art League, but Smyrna Art Cooperative as well, so.
Well, great, we are glad to have you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be here.
Good, good. Next, we have Kenyon Deets.
(inaudible).
Yay![489.78][489.78](applause). And Kenyon was our middle school winner, and, oh, looks like you had a couple, or is yours just on top?
Oh, all three.
All three? Wow, pretty talented. So, tell us where you go to school, and maybe if you want to tell a little bit about your artwork.
I go to school at Rocky Fork Middle, and I would draw a lot, and I wanted to take the next step further and start selling it.
Hmm, very nice, a little entrepreneur as well as an artist. So, congratulations, Chief. Are we good? Are we going to get a picture? Okay.
Eric Mayor, you want to start an auction while you're up there?
Sure, is it going to go to the general fund?[536.29][536.29](laughing). Thank you, Kenyon. And next, we have Roth Prieb, and Roth was elementary school. Is Roth there? Oh, come on up, Roth.[546.22][546.22](applause). So, Roth, tell us how old you are and where you go to school.
I'm homeschooled, and I'm nine.
And you're nine. And do you like your teacher?[564.72][564.72](laughing).
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, good, I'm glad. That's a good answer, good answer. So, tell us a little bit about your artwork.
Well, I've been drawing since I was two, so I've really been working on my art and...
It looks very nice, and if you've been drawing since two, you've been drawing a long, long time, almost as old as I am.[594.32][594.32](laughing).
In dog years.[596.79][596.79](laughing).
No comments from the peanut gallery.[601.16][601.16](laughing). Chief, have you got, oh, Roth, we're going to turn this way, and Chief's going to get our picture.[605.79][605.79](laughing). Thank you, Roth. Good job.[611.51][611.51](applause). And we have one individual that could not be with us tonight, and that's Christian Young, who won the high school division, but we did want to display Christian's artwork. So, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who was involved. It takes a whole community to put something like this on. Raquel and her committee do a great job with the Arts Commission, and it continues to grow every year. So, thank you for continuing to support the arts in the town of Smyrna. Thanks. Those of you that are standing, we've had some leave. If you want to come in and sit down, you're more than welcome to do that. We are now ready to move on to our consent agenda. These are items determined by our town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion. They can be voted on as a group, or a council member can choose to pull one of these items off to be voted on individually. I do like to read all of the items so that the citizens know exactly what we are voting on, on the consent agenda. So, item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Rockwell relative to the technical support for water treatment plant programmable logic controllers. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Clark Engineering and Utility Solutions relative to the Catatonic Protection Survey troubleshooting for the gas department. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dan Weaver Services relative to the water leak survey. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts relative to materials for the gas, water, and sewer. Item A, Water and Sewer Vendors, Core &amp; Main, National Meter Automation, Southern Pipe, GNC Supply, United Systems and Software, Ferguson Waterworks, Fortoline. Our gas vendors are Carrot Test Equipment Controls, GNC Supply, Honeywell, Elster, American Meter, Ed Young Sales, Chris George Sales, United Systems and Software, Richards Manufacturing, and Experitech. Item E is approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Judy Construction Company relative to the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order number one with Rosso Constructors LLC relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number two with Rosso Constructors LLC relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Randy Button &amp; Associates relative to the appraisal services for Phase One and Two of the Master Stormwater Project. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC Engineering relative to the engineering design services for the Genie Lane Extension Project. Item J, approval and authorization of check signers for the town's public funds accounts with First Tennessee Bank. And item K is consideration of the declaration of surplus properties. I am going to ask that item E, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Judy Construction Company relative to the wastewater treatment plant expansion be pulled off to have discussions separately. Is there any other item that council would like to pull off and discuss separately?
I don't want to pull it off. I do have a quick question on F and G. It looks like they're offsetting. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, Tom, there you are. I was looking for you, I didn't think you were here.[855.12][855.12](laughing). Yeah, it looks like one is for $30,000 increase, and the other is for $26,000 decrease.
Right, about a $4,000 differential.
Okay, yeah.
Other questions, or anybody want something to vote on separately? Okay, other than item E, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus item E.
The motion to a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian and I talked about item E. I asked for it to be pulled off. This is the largest project that the town of Smyrna has taken under its belt, I guess, forever. And so, I thought it deserved a little bit of attention and discussion. Also, thought it was important for the public as well as the town council to get a refresher on exactly what we're going to be doing. So, Brian got with Mike Strange, and they have put a presentation together. So, Mike?
How are you?
Great, what about you?
Doing well, thank you.
We're going to have to work on that tie.
I wore this special for you.
I bet you did.
Mike, is this your art semittel?
It is not my art semittel.[932.81][932.81](laughing).
The tie or the work on the screen?
Now, the tie could be an art semittel, right?
It don't win.
Okay, so, what we've got right here, this first is kind of an overlay, the areas that are darker are what is going to be new things at the plant. It's very difficult to tell from this drawing, so basically, I had Jerome, Jerome Dempsey's here also, he's the engineer on the project. If we get real, real technical with questions, Jerome's here to help out. So, this one here gives you a little bit better idea. So, if you start down at the bottom, right here, this is the headworks. That's where all the sewage comes in at the plant. We are reworking the headworks, adding an additional screen there, also putting some new grease removal systems in, and adding odor control. Now, with the odor control added, please be aware, it will help, but you will never ever eliminate all the odors. It is a wastewater plant, so there will still be some odor there, but that should help to greatly reduce the odor at the headworks.
I know we had issue with our last expansion with the headworks. Do we think this is going to take care of?
I believe it will, and I think Jerome's on board with that also. We've done some pretty major things with the headworks, basically reworking the whole thing.
Right.
I think that you'll see a major improvement there with the odors, but again, we can eliminate them all, but this will help greatly here.
See, you're talking about the odor, what about the...
Sir, sir, we're, I'm sorry. Well, that's okay. Go ahead.[1033.56][1033.56](laughing).
Okay, so, if you look, it's kind of hard to see. All the items that have just the slashed lines are new. Any items that you see, the checkers, the checks in there, like the gingham checks, that's updated. So, if you move up from the headworks, there's the raw water lift station. We are upgrading pump sizes there to handle additional flow. Moving to here, these are the existing oxidation basins. These will be retrofitted with the Barden-Fo system. The reason we chose the Barden-Fo system, it's advanced nutrient removal, and our limits from T-deck are extremely tight on what we can discharge into the stream. Those are 6 million gallons total. Right here, the new oxidation basin, 3 million gallons, which gets us to the 9 million expansion that we are doing. Here's the existing clarifiers, there's six of those, and right here is the two new clarifiers. If you'll notice here in the dotted lines, these are not being built, these clarifiers or this oxidation basin, but it will be prepared to go to 12 million gallons in the future. Okay? Um, let's see, the proposed anaerobic basin, that is new also. Really, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerome, in your oxidation basins here in the proposed anaerobic basin, that's where all the magic happens, so to speak. That's where you start getting your nutrients, your fleas start interacting with the sewage and start eating what they can. Then, once all that happens, you'll go to the clarifiers. From the clarifiers, you'll go to the disinfection. What we use is UV disinfection, we will be upgrading that. We already have it now, but it's going to be upgraded. And then, it will go through the disc filters. Disc filters are basically a final polish, so if we need to send more to the reuse system, we can. If not, what's left goes to these settling basins here and into dewatering. We are upgrading dewatering and removing the existing belt presses, putting in centrifuges. With the belt presses now, we can get somewhere in the neighborhood of 16% to 17% solids with the rest water. So, that makes for a kind of a heavier cake, which costs you more when you take to the landfill. With the centrifuges, somewhere, they're guaranteeing, what, 20, 20?
21.
21, so we'll be somewhere in that neighborhood with that. And then, obviously, as it leaves there, down here is where your splitter box is, part of it goes to the reuse, and the rest of it goes to the stream. Questions? I know I went quick.
No, but I just think it's important for us to know, talk a little bit about cost of the project.
The cost of the project with the add alternates and deductive alternates came in at 35,484, 35,484,000. It is a three-year project. We do have some funding through SRF, which we're attempting to get more funding. If not, we'll go to the bond market. Again, this will be a three-year project. Based on current growth, you're probably looking at 12 to 15 years roughly before we start looking again. Of course, the more we can send to the reuse, the longer that will extend. I think right now, the reuse, it's basically summer only, and you're looking at 650,000 to 750,000 gallons a day, about 500,000, and that's golf course. So, we'll be looking at options to extend the reuse. With the disc filters, that also is a great polish for the reuse as well, where it can be used in cooling towers and things like that, which, you know, open up some different avenues for us to expand the reuse.
You say with current growth rates, 12 to 14 years, is that to add, to go up to the 12 million gallons?
Yes.
And when we do that, is it as simple as it looks, adding those additional tanks, or do we have to make additional upgrades in the system somewhere else?
I think we've kind of set it up where we're ready to go to 12, but there's going to be some, a few things that obviously would have to be done as well. But, we've kind of set this up, the way Jerome's designed this, is get us to 10, but be ready to go to 12 when we need to be.
I appreciate you guys thinking ahead.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions for Michael Miss?
So, you said that we'll be set up to go to 12, that there will be some things that will still need to be improved once we get to that point?
Well, I think, like adding some additional pumps.
Okay.
Things like that, you know, as far as the, of course, we'd have to add another oxidation ditch or basin and two more clarifiers, but that would be, you know, pretty major construction. But, the other stuff, we've kind of set it up where we've got space available to add to the UV thing, to add to the disc filters, where it's already available, we're just not putting it in there yet.
And so, the ditch that you're talking about, there is space for where that would go when the time came?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, what kind of options are available for the solids besides the landfill?
Well, right now, during the summer, we also go to the farm, you know, we'll spread it on the farm. You have, obviously, have limits and rates that you have to meet with T-deck. You can go to, you know, the gas-fired units and turn it into Class A sludge. We did evaluate that, it seemed like it was another 7 to 9 million, something like that. It was just out of, you know, out of the price range for now, but that is, you know, that is a possibility in the future.
Other questions from counsel? Okay. Then, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to spend 35,484,000.[1424.41][1424.41](laughing). That's gracious.
Okay.
And I'll second H.G.'s motion to spend 35,484,000.
I hope that number's right.[1436.33][1436.33](laughing).
I'm reading it.
Okay, good.[1439.33][1439.33](laughing). Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mike, will you get with this gentleman to answer his questions before the meeting's over? Thank you. Old Business, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven public hearings tonight in our Old Business. Looks like we have a lot of people here who might choose to speak. To kind of let you know protocol, you'll have three minutes to come speak on whatever topic it is that you'd like to speak on. We just ask that you state your name, your address, and if you live in the town limits of Smyrna, then you're welcome to address the council for three minutes. Anyone here who wants to speak is going to have their opportunity to speak. The only thing that I ask is that we're going to be respectful of each other. Counsel will be respectful of you, and we ask that you be respectful of counsel as well as being respectful of everyone else in the audience. Okay, our first public hearing is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.02. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this first public hearing is the plan of services for the annexation. That's the next item on your agenda. This is property on Morton Lane, it's about, or just under 14 acres total. Plan of services is something that is required for all annexations. This puts in writing the services the town will be providing to this property upon the effective date of annexation. The town would be providing all services here except for water, as this does lie within its holiday utility districts service area. The planning commission did review this and did recommend it to you. We'll point out, one of the questions that has come up regarding, was regarding fire flow provision here, this area will not meet the requirements of fire flow at this time, but there is a underway currently upgrade by CUD that would create that issue or correct that issue. So, I think that's all that I've got.
Question, and they are aware of that, obviously. Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, no questions for Kevin, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I will not be voting on this on the next item.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Oh, move it quick.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item B is also a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R-3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.02, containing approximately 13.81 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Jim W. and Linda McLameric, properties located at 4200 Morton Lane, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is the annexation that you just looked at, the plan of services for. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. This is on the map, it is the parcel that is highlighted in blue, is what you're looking at there. Land is planned with support medium-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-1, R-3, and the PRD, which is the Cedar Hills PRD in Smyrna, and RM in Rutherford County. Again, this does lie within CUD's boundary for water services, but the town would be providing all other services. The planning commission did review this and did recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin on the annexation and R-3 zoning of this property? No questions, then we will go to the public to see if there's someone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move it.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion?
Abstain.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with Vice Mayor Atkins abstaining. Item C is our consideration of a resolution in Memorandum of Ordinance 19-29 relative to the annexation and R-3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.02. This is our requirement that we have to do when we annex, so do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, move it quick.
A motion? Do we have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 20, parcels 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.00, and Tax Map 26, parcels 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, as well as approximately 2.4 miles of existing right-of-way on Jefferson Pike. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is the plan of services for the annexation and zoning. Next item on your agenda. As you said, it's several parcels totaling approximately 396 acres, as well as about 2.4 miles of the existing right-of-way of West Jefferson Pike. The town would be providing all services here, as this does lie within the town's service area for water. Planning commission did review this and did recommend... Planning commission did review this and did recommend it. I will point out, this one is a little different, just in that because of the road widening, and that is, would be undertaken by T-Dot beginning next year. The town will be upgrading water lines as well as extending sewer. That will be done as, in conjunction with that road improvement, so those, the sewer will not be there tomorrow. It will be as a part of that road improvement and all of that. So, just wanted, that is spelled out in the plan of services, just wanted to point that out, because it is a little bit different than what we normally have.
So, Kevin, I'm going to make the assumption that a lot of the people that are here in the audience are probably here to get more information on this project. Because of that, I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit more about the project. I will, I know that flyers were put on mailboxes. I know that flyers were also mailed out, and they did have information on them, but a lot of the information that was on the flyer as well as on the mailer didn't have the full story. And I want you all to be able to hear the full story of what the project is that we as a council have been able to hear for the last three meetings. So, sir, I'm going to ask you to abstain from hollering out, and if you can't, then we'll ask you to sit in the hall. We don't want to have to do that. We want you to be able to hear everything. Thank you. So, if you will talk a little bit about the full project so that everyone has accurate information.
Sure. Yeah, this, the project as far as, which will be the next item, which will be the annexation and zoning part of this. It is requested to be annexed and zoned for a PUD, a planning development. It's got a mixture of uses, a mixture of things that are proposed. It does have frontage on Hickory Grove Road as well as Jefferson Pike, as far as the road frontage. The proposed development is a mix of office, retail, neighborhood service-type uses, as well as industrial uses, including a proposed rock quarry. The pattern book is, or as we submit to you all, is available, certainly if anybody wants a copy of that. The planning commission did review this. It's basically a, it's a mix, again, a mixture of things. The quarry itself, one of the planning commission's recommendations was to define the area, and so they did have done that. They have, subsequent to that meeting, did limit that to one hundred and fifty acres of the three hundred and ninety-six. It would be on the northernmost portion of this area that's shown in yellow on the map.
And John, do you have, I'm sorry, John's our TV guy. There you go.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit, just to give people an idea of where we're looking at?
Yeah, this, this is kind of rotated ninety degrees from the map. North would be to the, to the left, I guess, here. You have the quarry on the left side of this drawing. Again, that would be the northernmost part of the property, next to the existing quarry that is there already. And then, as you come south from that, right on this drawing, you'll be coming towards Jefferson Pike and the Jefferson Pike A-40 interchange. As you come south, you would have some lighter industrial uses next to the quarry, and then you would have the more office and retail mix as you come further south. One of the, again, one of the conditions is recommended, recommended by the planning commission, and they did agree to this, was that the construction would begin on the SRM corporate office prior to the quarry being, beginning. So, that is part of the development would be, the SRM corporate office.
Which is how large?
They're looking at a four to six stories, I think, not exact, but I think it's in the, in the...
Seventy thousand square feet or something in that range?
Sixty thousand square feet range. Multi-story building.
And located where on this map?
On that drawing, it's basically in the middle. You can kind of see it, see it well. There's a pointer. It's right here.
Okay. And can I talk a little bit about, just so citizens understand, give them some ideas of the zoning of the buildings, of what sort of buildings we might be able to see?
Well, certainly, the, what we would hope to see is more like what they're wanting to build, which would be a corporate office, corporate office park. That is their, their vision of the property, is it would have a corporate office feel on that southern, you know, half to two-thirds of the property. You would also, as a part of that, you could see some, certainly some more retail, again, and service uses. You are at interchange with an interstate, so you could certainly see some of that type of retail hotels or restaurants, or gas stations, or whatever, that kind of stuff, certainly. And obviously, some things that might cater to the businesses that would be located in the business part, you know, some day and lunch-type restaurants and things of that nature. So, I mean, I think that would be kind of a mix. And then you would, again, you would have some, next to the quarry, with some, potentially some, some lighter industrial uses or office industrial-type mix there.
Questions or comments for Kevin on this?
Kevin, on this picture here, where will Jefferson Pike actually be?
Jefferson Pike is on this picture, is to the, the far right, I guess you would say. You have, along the top part of that is A-40. Again, the north would be to the left on this drawing. The top of the page is A-40, and then Jefferson Pike would be to the, to the right, perpendicular to A-40.
Is this taken into consideration, the new widening part of Jefferson Pike, or is it the actual old part of it? I think it moves a little bit with the widening.
It does move a little bit. I think it does take that into consideration. I think there, as well, the Hickory Grove Road, existing alignment of Hickory Grove Road, as part of the conditions, they are required to upgrade Hickory Grove Road as well, and there, back to the quarry entrance. So, they'll have, you know, the specifics on that may change as far as the alignment of Hickory Grove Road a little bit as well, as this gets fully designed and engineered.
Do you know about how far, as far as the quarry? I think I know what it is. I went down there and looked, but I think, I think I know what it is. Basically, from Jefferson Pike to Blue Water, I think, was about a mile. So, will this be seven tenths a mile down there, you think? Is that about where it works out? I see somebody shaking their head back there.
I think that, that sounds about right. I don't, I haven't measured it myself, but I think that does sound roughly.
I think I measured it. About six, about nine tenths going from there to Blue Water's entrance, and then coming back a little ways was...
Questions or comments for Kevin? The one thing about a PUD is that it cannot change unless it comes back to the town for approval. Correct, Kevin?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Actually, one other thing that was on the flyer that I read was about the whole annexation issue. Can you just, Kevin, can you explain how that works? When someone wants to be annexed, we don't actually go out and try to bring someone into the town. They have to make that request to us.
Yeah, we cannot annex anyone unless they request it. The property owner has to request or consent to be annexed by the town, and so, in this case, the property owner has done that. If I'll go, maybe, yeah, this map, there are three parcels shown on this map in red, not yellow, and the reason they're shown in red is those are three parcels that are not owned by Mr. Hollingshead or his, any of his company. And so, because they're not owned, they can request them, and so, we are, with this annexation, those three parcels would be left out. And that's a, there's one house on one of them, one, I believe, is vacant, and one is a cemetery. And so, we would not be annexing those tracks. So, yeah, we cannot annex anyone unless the owner consents to be annexed.
Kevin, one, one thing I think that would be beneficial is, kind of explain real quick, if we didn't vote to annex, or if Mr. Hollingshead hadn't come and asked us to annex, kind of the status of the property today, and what it could be used for, and what approvals are, who he would have to go through if he wanted to have a rock quarry that wasn't annexed as part of the town?
Yeah, he would, he could certainly, as, could request rezoning through the Rutherford County Planning Commission and County Commission. The, the current zoning, I think there's a mix of several things out there, some light industrials, some, I think some of it is still residential in the county, and some of it has a, an EAC, which is Employee Activity Type Center, which is partially what they're asking for with us, really, certainly on the southern half of it. Our southern, roughly two-thirds, so. But that's what it's currently zoned, so certainly they could develop it without any zoning of any kind, under those zoning parameters, and then, don't believe there, could do a quarry there currently. They would have to ask for rezoning through the county as well to do a quarry, so certainly they could request that, and it would be up to the county commission whether or not they would approve of that.
And since it's in our urban growth boundary, there would be no other city oversight. It would just be county, right?
Right.
If it wasn't annexed.
Yeah, Smyrna is the only city that could annex in that area, yes.
So, I, I think the point I'm trying to make is that Mr. Hollingshead and his company could petition Rutherford County Commission to build a quarry. If he got approval to do that, he could, you know, move forward, whether we annex him or not. You know, whether or not they would approve it, I don't know, but it's definitely, it's not, it's in Smyrna's urban growth boundary, so they probably would. They'd probably say it's far enough away.
Well, you know, one of the things, too, we've had recently, we've gotten the news that Jefferson Pike has been put into the funding for widening, and so, we're excited about that. The town itself will take the burden on of running utility services out to the A-40 area. I don't know why we would necessarily have any interest in taking that on if Mr. Hollingshead were to go to the county and receive approval from the county. Why would we run services out there for the county to benefit from? So, one of the things we talked about there was the fact that we have some oversight this way, and we won't have to rely on the county or what they may or may not approve. And I heard a lot of discussion regarding the structure, the type of structure, that we, from an A-40 perspective, would like to see, in a sense, as a gateway into town. If you drive up and down A-40 right now, especially as you go towards Lebanon off of A-40, you can count the warehouses and the truck bays and, and all the things that are along that corridor. I think I, and we, from a planning commission's perspective, like the fact that we were going to have corporate offices there, some potential retail, some office park-type of structure to where, as you get off the interstate there in Smyrna, you know you're in Smyrna. You're not at some warehouse where trucks are in and out of there all the time. Now, we know there's a concrete firm out there. We know that they run trucks back and forth. We've had the conversation with them specifically regarding traffic flow up and down Jefferson Pike. Yes, it's getting widened. We've asked Mr. Hollingshead and his family to use their due diligence in routing their trucks directly over to A-40, simplifying the process of us not having to take on the burden of a lot of truck traffic in and out of town. One of the things I think they prefer to do is not have their trucks sit in our red lights right now and waiting to make deliveries of concrete and so forth and so on. So, it's kind of a match together that we can work with, to ask them to route their vehicles in a way that it won't affect our Smyrna traffic any more than it currently does. And with Jefferson Pike, there's a signal also planned there at Hickory Grove Road. I don't know if Kevin brought that up a while ago or not. T-Dot, from what I understand, has already said yes to that. So, there will be signalization and an improvement at Hickory Grove Road as you come onto Jefferson Pike. A lot of things taking place on Jefferson Pike over the next few years. It's going to take us a couple of years to see barrels out there, I think, the funding and bid letting and so forth. Once that happens, I think you're going to be pretty impressed with the fact that the town can go all the way out there, urban growth area. Actually, we go all the way over to the racetrack. A lot of people don't realize that. In addition to that, the flyer mentions a quarry, but what the flyer doesn't mention is, there's a quarry there. There's already one out there. So, I know that somebody may or may not like the fact that somebody wants to expand a quarry out there, but I'm a little fearful if we let this go, we just sit on it and let it go, then the county rolls in on us and we get what we get. And so, that could be a whole different picture from what we're seeing proposed here. The planning commission did ask for the Hollingsheads to, before they could start any work on that quarry, we put it in our minutes and our approval that they would have to start their corporate office structure first, and they were agreeable with that. So, there's a lot of things from the flyer's perspective, that if you got one, you didn't see everything, and so, we're glad that you're here, willing to listen, have some dialogue, and understand what our motivations are as Smyrna grows out towards A-40. We're going to be putting a lot of money into Jefferson Pike, and so, we want to have some say in what Jefferson Pike looks like when you get to A-40. If we don't do this, we have no say, and it's going to be what it's going to be. So, thank you.
Talking about the urban growth boundary, that's probably not a term, a lot of you may know what exactly that we're talking about. Communities got together, gosh, Jeff, how many years ago?
It's over twenty now.
How long?
It was over twenty now.
Over twenty years ago, and set urban growth boundaries. That is where the city limits of those communities can go to. Now, with the new laws, we can only acquire land that individuals within our urban growth boundary choose to come into the town of Smyrna to be annexed. We cannot go out and annex your property. So, that's one thing, and I'm glad, Raquel, that you brought it up, because I think there may be some here tonight that were worried that we're going to come out and annex your property if you don't want that, and that can't happen. But, just for you to know, our urban growth boundary goes over A-40, and we go all the way to the racetrack in Wilson County. So, that's quite a bit of property that eventually can be developed if those individuals choose for their property to be developed. And you all know as well as I do, the one thing in the town that we're not gaining a lot more of is land, and land that's being, that can be built on. So, this is an area that will grow, maybe not during the time that I'm mayor, but at some point, it will. And with those utilities being out there, that will provide that opportunity for the town to continue to grow out A-40. Counsel, anything else before we move to the public hearing? I want the public to understand, there are two public hearings in regards to this. The first thing that we're looking on, voting on, is the plan of services. I wanted Kevin to go ahead and show you all the entire project. That way, some of the questions you may have had are already answered, and we also wanted you to get a full picture. We want you to be able to have an informed decision about this project. The flyer you got would not give you an informed decision. So, we're not trying to change anybody's minds or try to make your mind up for you. We just want you to know all of the information that the town has been provided. So, Kevin, anything else under item D before we move to the public hearing?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Then, I will go to the public to see if anyone is here to speak for or against this item, and if you will come forward, state your name, your address, if you live inside the city limits of Smyrna, and if you're here representing a business or an organization.
Thank you, Mayor, greeting, counsel. My name is Steve Steele. I do live here in Smyrna at 408 Division Street. I'm a principal in the firm of Huddleston Steel Engineering in Murfreesboro. I have Clyde Roundtree with me tonight. He's a planner that works with me. He's the one that put together the pattern book that you've been referencing up here and that you looked at at Planning Commission at the previous council meeting. We are appearing on behalf of the Hollingshead family. Mike, Jeff, and Brian are all here, and we'll be glad to answer questions or address questions you might have at the appropriate time, but I just want to let you know right now that we're here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else want to speak for or against this item? If you'll come forward and state your name, your address, if you live inside the city limits, and if you're here representing a business, and just three minutes is what we have. I always like to remind people.
My name is Michael Tackett. I live at 101 Airview Drive in Smyrna, Tennessee, and I don't know if my question should be addressed to the council or them.
Okay.
Well, you know, one of my first questions is, is, will there be blasting in this quarry? Because I'm a United States Marine Corps infantry vet with two combat tours to Iraq and garment fallujah. I got a lot of souvenirs, physical mentor, super father. Right now, I continue serving our nation's veterans with the Department of Veteran Affairs. I've done so for six and a half years as a legal administrative specialist down on West End Avenue. I changed positions down to the regional office at the federal courthouse, and they happen to be blasting two blocks over. I can tell you, every time that blast goes off, I think I'm dead. And I'm just wanting to know, where are the nearest residential areas to this quarry to, you might say, has the mental toll? I don't know if we've got any other veterans in this room. I'm sure we got at least one. And, you know, what kind of mental toll this might take on, on the surrounding residents, because you don't have to have, you know, I, I grew up in Antioch and over on Franklin Limestone Road, and if anyone knows about that place, there was a quarry over there that shook our house, you know, five, six times a day. Thankfully, it was a rental, so we didn't have to worry about that. Will there be blasting or... have to worry about that. Um, will there be blasting or is it just going to be, you might say, straight, um, jackhammering with a giant, um, what's, what's, how will they be extracting the rock?
Okay. And see what I'm going to do. I'm going to take all questions and we'll answer all questions at the end. And, and so, um, that way we can get everybody's questions answered at once. And that way we're not back and forth.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, will there be, um, after this plan, will there be plans to, to, to expand it in the future? Um, what kind of jobs is this bringing to our, to our area, you know? Are we talking, you know, they're just going to take their existing employees, move them out there? Or are they actually creating jobs for this community? Um, as well as, um, they said that there was a cemetery nearby. Is, if there is blasting, is that going to disrupt, uh, those people's final resting places? I mean, you know, that's going to shake the ground and, um, is there, is there an option to, for a town vote on this or is it simply, you know, solely up to the council?
I can tell you that, that's council.
And then the, say again?
I can tell you that, that's council.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, and then just the general noise in the area, like I said, you know, um, I, I'm not, I'm not in the, in, in the business of trying to impede progress. Um, but like I said, you know, there's a reason I moved to Smyrna because it's still got that small town feel. And, you know, I don't want, you know, fourteen, and I, I don't live anywhere near the quarry, you know what I mean? It's probably not even going to affect me. But, you know, I spent, you know, like I said, I've spent six and a half years, you know, helping veterans, thinking about other people's problems and not my own. So, you know, just the general noise, the traffic, you know, like I said, where's the nearest residential area? Are there any parks nearby? Will there be children, you know-
Three minutes.
Nearby?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Tackett. And Mr. Tackett, thank you for your service. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this?
By the way, that was against.
My name's Robert Tigerbon. I live at 2003 Harlem Drive. I just recently moved this year to this community. Uh, my property is definitely going to be affected in the fact that 266 Jefferson Pike being widened. My next door neighbor is right here in the audience. She's going to be losing a portion of her property to the widening. We've already had a house that has been closed for a few years now. The city still hasn't demolished it, but it's supposed to be used for the widening of the road. By the way, I'm the one that ends up mowing the lawn there to keep the druggies out. My question is, what are you going to do for the neighbors that now are going to be picking up more road noise from the highway extent, expansion? You know, we're bringing road much closer to people's homes. So now their quality of life is definitely being affected. I'd like to, you know, see if there's going to be anything to help the people in the Harbor Isles community to deal with the road congestion. I myself have almost been killed by a dump truck twice now trying to turn left onto Harbor Drive and right there at the bridge, always turn on your left-hand turn signal at the middle of the bridge and start pumping your brakes to let people know that you're turning left. I get large trucks coming down there that aren't paying attention and they're, they'll lay on their brakes a hundred yards behind me. If I don't cut off people in front of me, I'm going to get hit by the truck. So we need to address the traffic issues. It has definitely become a safety issue. We have wrecks on that bridge at least monthly. Yeah, so it's-
Okay.
Really what I have to say.
Okay, great. And we'll go back and address all of these. Anyone else to speak for or against? If you'll come forward and just state your name.
I live in the county, but I live in-
Absolutely. You still can come speak.
My name is Jan Eddy and, uh, my address is 118 Nick Price Drive in Murfreesboro. Um, we, I live in the villages of Cedar Crest. And we already get shaking and booming and we have nail pops. So the noise and that shaking is a big concern. So I'm really anxious to hear how that, I mean, we're really close. So I need to know how much we're going to be involved in that.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against? If you'll come forward.
Hi, I'm Madison Savage. I live at 310 Milhouse Road. And I live here in Smyrna. Uh, I, I am more or less against the rock quarry because I believe the word used to, for the location it's going in, is to define the land that it's going into. Uh, how do we know that there won't be another rock quarry to be put in Smyrna to define another location as well, as well as the closeness to another residential area, which was already brought up by that gentleman over there, as well as what will it do to our property taxes here in town? Will it raise them up? Will it cause our properties to depreciate because of the advancements going into the town or what exactly is going on?
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else to speak for or against? Then I will close this public hearing. And before we vote, I'd like to address these questions. Kevin, you want to come back up? And I've written them down. Um, and I don't know if you'll need, um, to talk to Mr. Steele as well for some of these.
Yeah, some of them, I think.
You what?
I think someone from Huddleston Steel or-
Okay.
I'm going to address a few of them.
I'm just going to take them one by one. Let's talk a little bit about blasting and, um, the regulations by the state in regards to blasting.
Yeah, the state does, the town does not regulate blasting. It is regulated by the state of Tennessee. Uh, I don't know that, I'm assuming they will be using blasting on this quarry. That's an assumption I am making. I don't know that for certain. Uh, but they will be, be regulated by the state, um, however the state inspects those. Uh, I'm sure they have to keep records of, of the various blasts and all that. So I know that at times that we've had those issues on completely not on a quarry because Smyrna has so much rock, people will blast and, and they're, we get complaints about that. And we always refer them to the state fire marshal's office. Uh, we do, uh, keep records. Uh, we're through permitting process. We, we, it's basically just so that we know who is blasting, who the company is and all that. So when people call us, we can refer them to the state and to the, so the state knows exactly what location they're calling about.
Okay. Um, expansion in the future. Talk a little bit about any expansion that has to be done, what the process is that they can't just willy-nilly decide that they're going to expand.
Yeah. With a PUD, uh, they are, we are limited to, based on the recommended condition of the planning commission, to the 150 acres. Uh, they could not go above that without going back through this whole process, coming back to the planning commission and back to the council to amend their PUD to do something larger.
Okay. Um, talk a little bit about the cemetery.
The cemetery, uh, I did look into that some just because if you look at it, um-
And where on the map? Show everyone on the map where the cemetery is.
It's the parcel, it's the, our area that's red is completely surrounded by yellow, kind of close to the 840 interchange there. Uh, and, uh, the cemetery is, is, uh, they have to maintain access to that from anybody who wants, who wishes to go to the cemetery. Uh, it's my understanding it is still an active cemetery. Uh, and so whatever, all of their development plans would have to take that into account and they would have to provide access continuing 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, uh, access to that cemetery. Uh, as far as the effects of the quarry is on the, the, again, the northern portion of the parcel, the cemetery is on the southern portion of the area. So there is quite a bit of distance in between the two of regards to the continuous blasting that we'll be assuming.
It looks like, based on the design, the cemetery would essentially be surrounded by the office park.
Right.
Um, so any damage or blasting to the ground around that cemetery is going to affect those buildings as well, I'll assume.
Right.
Okay. Um, talking a little bit about noise and noise from the quarry. Anything you can add to that?
Um, I know that we, the town does have noise ordinances that they would have to abide by. Uh, that's, that's all I can speak to that specifically, but.
Does Kevin, do you have any, uh, Kevin?
I honestly don't know if they do or not. I, I really don't.
Okay. Um, uh, expansion of the highway and road congestion. Talk a little bit about what the road's going to look like and how that should help with road congestion and being able to get in and out of, um, neighborhoods and things like that.
Yeah, it's a, it's going to be a, basically a four flash five lane road. I think part of it's going to have a median and part of it's going to have a continuous turn lane. Um, so it's going to be, obviously going to be widened. Yes, it will be closer to, if you live along Jefferson Pike, the road's going to be closer to you in certain locations. Um, some places it's moving south and some places it's moving more toward the north. But, uh, but again, it's, it's a five, five, four slash five lane road, uh, should address, you know, some of those safety issues because you're going to be able to have a turn lane where you don't have one now and that sort of stuff of things.
And I know you said you just moved here, but I will tell you, we've been trying for years and years to get the state to move forward with the widening of Jefferson Pike. It is a very, very dangerous road. And, um, hopefully widening it to, widening it to the five lanes, um, will make things safer for those of you that are having to drive it on a daily basis. I feel really bad for you guys because-
I don't want to speak out of turn, but if it goes five lanes, my neighbor's going to have the road five feet from her house.
And, and that's already done. That, that was a decision by the state when the state decided to widen the road. And that was another thing I was going to say. You talked about the home. I'm assuming that's a home that the state took-
I believe they did.
For the widening of the road. So I just didn't want you to think the town was, was in charge of coming to take that house and all that. Um, is a function of the state. Right.
Still, yeah.
See, I just want to make sure that we're clear. Jefferson Pike widening project is separate, independent from this project.
Right. Um, but I do think the widening of Jefferson Pike is going to make a huge difference for us in regards to development out 840. Also think, and I hate that it's going to be that close to your home, but I do think for the overall good, it's going to make a huge difference for those that are having to drive that road on a daily basis. Um-
Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also, my understanding is that the five lanes is basically going to the bridge and then it becomes the two, two-lane, uh, from there with the turn in right there at Harbor Isle.
Right. It'd be a four, it'd be a four lane, but that's where the median begins.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, traffic, uh, okay. And then, um, we had the question asked, will there be, um, another rock quarry? The only way another rock quarry can come into the town of Smyrna is exactly what's happening tonight. They have to come before the planning commission and then it has to come before the town council. So somebody can't just decide that they want to, in the county or in the town of Smyrna, put in a rock quarry without going through the proper protocol. Um, another question was property depreciation. Kevin, do you want to talk a little bit?
I don't know that I-
You're not qualified? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not a, I'm not a property appraiser or anything like that. I think certainly the, yeah, property values go up and down depending on a lot of different factors. So I don't know that I can speak to that specifically on that.
Um, Brian, as former economic development, can you talk a little bit about, once utilities get out to that area, the difference in property values?
Yeah. You know, from a standpoint of the interchanges up 840, we're seeing tremendous growth on the interchanges that have utilities available to them. Uh, as you would see, you know, we're, I think we're kind of getting stuck just on the quarry part of this. You got to look at the overall, uh, vision that's going to happen out there with, uh, commercial establishments, with office buildings, those type things. And I know one of the questions was how many jobs. Uh, you know, I know Mr. Hollingshead alone is bringing 250 jobs roughly from Nashville back into the Smyrna market, just in his building. Uh, proportionately, I would say we would see, you know, probably 1,500 to 2,000 other jobs related to the development of this property. Anytime you have that kind of growth in the market from the job standpoint, you should see parallel back to the residential. Uh, this is 400 acres, 396 acres of even more property that will be developed long-term. So, you know, I think from the standpoint of new growth out Jefferson Pike to 840, typically what you see is the town won't grow to the interchange, the interchange grows back to the town. And when the utilities are there and that growth begins, you'll see growth coming back in. And that typically is a positive growth. I don't see it being a negative from the standpoint of, of, you know, the market.
Well, and there's already a current quarry there.
That's right. There's already-
It's not as if it's a new quarry that, that there's never been one there.
Another thing to take into account too is this is not going to be a shabby development. And it'll set the tone for the rest of the development as, as it goes. Um, with the, I mean, you know, it's been a nice, well, it's not a nice peaceful ride out there because the condition of the road. But I mean, you know, it's kind of a ride through the country as you go out to, to 840. And, um, it, it kind of gets down to development is coming because the roads being widened, because the utilities are going to be there. And, and as I said before, this sets the tone for it and should give it an upscale development angle rather than, as, as Mark mentioned earlier, just, just a bunch of warehouses and, and desolate area on 840. As he said, a gateway into our community.
You know, one thing that hasn't even been discussed yet is the fact that the town's committed to putting a fire station up that way. And, um, we'll have to. So with that being said, from a safety perspective to people who may live out in that area, you'll have full, full committed city fire services as well, police and fire services.
Um, I would like for, obviously, noise, blasting procedures and that sort of thing have been brought up. That's not something that I do every day. And, um, it's not something Kevin or anybody on the council does. So I was wondering if someone from the development is willing to come forward to talk a little bit about it. And, um, if you will come forward and state your name and address and if you live inside the city limits?
Yes, my name is Jeff Hollingshead, 911 Claude Jones Road in Murfreesboro. Uh, so, so, yeah, we can speak to the blasting itself. We actually hire a third-party service to come in and do the blasting in quarries. And pending on the shot in the area that you're in, you take larger shots or smaller shots. In this particular area, we would make the commitment to take much smaller shots, uh, and do that in times of the day where, uh, you know, people are at work. So you, you make those shots at 10:00 AM, uh, where people are not the least amount impacted. And, you know, I grew up across the street from Blue Water, uh, in, in that house on Hickory Grove Road. And we, we personally never had, you know, any issues with Hoover on that quarry. Uh, and we were, we were right next door. And they were making big shots because there, there wasn't any residential out in that area. Uh, so I certainly understand everyone's concern. But to that point as well, you know, we're investing, uh, $15 million just in the structure of our office building. And that's an all-glass structure. So we are not going to do anything that would damage the integrity of our building. Uh, and that goes from cleanliness to, to blasting as well. And to this gentleman's point, which I appreciate your service as well, uh, but to, to your point in, in harming the cemetery, we're going to be right next door to that. So it's, it's counterintuitive for us to, to harm either one.
Um, and I'm assuming you may be able to answer this. Um, talk a little bit about the regulations from the state that y'all are required in regards to blasting.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so for a quarry in general, you have to have air and water permits. Uh, and that's really, and then T-DEC does annual inspections and then OSHA does inspections. So it's a safety issue for us, uh, in when, in regards to blasting in general, uh, because you don't want to have, uh, people getting hurt when you pull in a shot.
Right.
Uh, and then also pending the area of the quarry that you're blasting, you take that impact back to areas, I don't want to get too complicated, but you take the, the brunt impact to, back to areas where there are no residential. Uh, so we would want that impact to flow towards the north side of the development, towards the Blue Water quarry and back towards our concrete plant where there's no houses in hurt. So all of that impact's going to flow that way. And you leave the open side of the pit towards Jefferson Pike where it just, it won't be felt. Now, the, the reason why you would have nail pops or feel something now is maybe, maybe, you know, folks are not taking that into account, that, that back impact of that blast. So-
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hollingshead? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Eddy, I will tell you, it's probably not going to get better. You know what I mean? Um, we just saw the sewer plant. My house sits directly behind the sewer plant. I would love for the smell to go away, but you know what? It's not going to go away. And, um, I knew that when I bought my house and, and put it there. And so, um, there are going to be some things that I'm not going to sit up here and tell you it's going to be a magic thing and it's going to get better because it's not. But based on regulations, it should not get any worse than what it- But based on regulations, it should not get any worse than what it currently is with a rock quarry that's in the county. I do think with utilities going out there, I do think with the widening of the road and with the development, I do think it's going to be better out there than what possibilities could be if it stayed in the county. Let's talk a little bit, Kevin, will you talk a little bit about the process of the road widening? And, and just so you all know, that's out of our control. If it was in the town of Smyrna's control, it would have been done years and years and years ago. We're at the mercy of TDOT and TDOT's a great organization to work with, but they just don't move as fast as we would like them to move. So let's talk a little bit about timeline of the road project.
Yeah, I think the most, I may be corrected, I may not be completely up to date because I know things change sometimes. And last I heard, it was kind of in August next year, bid letting, probably October timeframe for starting up construction. And so that's October 2020, approximately three-year project after that.
So we're looking at best-case scenario, October of 2020, when they would get started and then it's a three-year process. And I'm going to tell you, that three years is not going to be fun. It's not going to be fun for any of us and especially those that live on the road. But we're asking you to be patient because in the end, it will be significantly better. We've got quite a few projects in the town that are going on, Sam Ridley and Enon Springs Road West, that we're, that it's not fun right now. But sometimes progress makes you want to pull your hair out, but in the end, it hopefully will be better for all of us. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just to note real quickly that from a landscaping perspective, the thing that caught my eye is that they're going to keep a lot of the natural tree lines in and, and green space and whatnot. And I think in and of itself, around the quarry, that's going to create a buffer as well.
Okay. We have had our public hearing on item D, which is the resolution for a plan of services for these properties. That's all we're voting on at this point. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on the plan of services? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item E, which is also a public hearing, but this is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and the PUD zoning for the properties located on Tax Map 20, Parshall's 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.00. And Tax Map 26, Parshall's 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, containing approximately 396 acres. It's requested by Michael Hollingshead. The properties are all along West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road. The planning commission also recommended the annexation of approximately 2.4 miles of the existing right-of-way of Jefferson Pike, and this is a second reading. Kevin, I know you've kind of already done your spiel for the whole project, but is there anything else you'd like to add for this?
I think we've covered, covered it pretty well with the last public hearing.
Okay. Council, any questions or comments that you'd like to add before we go to the public? Okay. Then at this time, we will go to the public for, to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is item F, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 19-30 relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 20, Parshall's 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.00. And Tax Map 26, Parshall's 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, in the right-of-way of Jefferson Pike. This is, I call it our housekeeping item from the state, so do I have a motion? A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before I move on to our next public hearing, I just want to take this opportunity to thank each of you that have come to this meeting tonight. To me, this is exactly how it's supposed to work. You're supposed to come out to hear about items that you have concerns about and that you want to get up and have discussion with your local government about. You may leave here not happy with how we voted, but I want you to know that we looked into this matter and I wanted you all to have exactly what was going to take place in this project and know the full story. I don't think it's fair to you as citizens or to us as council members to only have a partial part of the story. I want you to know, each one of us are very open. You are welcome to email us or get in touch with us if during the process of this project you have questions. We are more than happy to answer those. We ask that you bear with us in the process of the road widening of Jefferson Pike and know that we are trying to do what's best for the entire community of the town of Smyrna. So you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'd love to have you, but if this was the part that you were mainly coming to listen to, you are more than welcome to leave at this time as well. But thank you all for being here. We'll move on to item G, which also is a public hearing, which is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 14.01, containing approximately 6.14 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R1 to R3. The property's located at 4150 Morton Lane and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's directly adjacent to a piece of property that you just annexed earlier on tonight. This is on the map that's on your screen there. It's the parcel that is highlighted in yellow. It's about 6.14 acres. Again, it is at 4150 Morton Lane. Land use plan would support a medium-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and Cedar Hills PRD in town and then RM in Rutherford County. The planning commission did review this and did recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin on this one? We've seen this one a couple of times and talked about it extensively, so...
This one has the same water restrictions as the other.
Yes.
It does. Okay. Since we have no questions for Kevin, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with Vice Mayor Atkins abstaining. Item H is also a public hearing, which is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, Parcel 39.00, containing approximately 2.82 acres. It's requested by Jim Davis to go from R3 to C2. The property's located at 11819 Old Nashville Highway and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a rezoning request from R1, I'm sorry, R3 to C2. Land use plan with, for the area with support on office, retail, multifamily mix here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3, R6, C2, and PRD, which is the villagers of Hazelwood across the street. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
You had said last time you had some phone calls of some surrounding homeowners. Any other phone calls or anything?
I've had phone calls as well as a couple of folks have come by the office and talked to me directly as well, in person as well. Concerns primarily from the single-family area surrounding the parcel.
Talk a little bit about the buffers that would probably be required.
Yeah, anytime we have a commercial and residential border, we always require a buffer. This would probably be a little bit more extensive just because it's with the C2 and R3. Probably you'd have, you'd have a double row of evergreen trees and shrubs mixed. Planning commission could also require fencing. That's something that they can do, have that ability. That would all be handled at the site plan level.
Right.
There is some existing trees there. Certainly that's something we've also done in the past. The planning commission has kind of, instead of tearing down trees to plant trees, just leave the trees that are there alone and supplement where there's, to fill in the gaps and that sort of thing as well. So something like that, could be, again, depending on the site and what's being proposed to be developed and all that, certainly would be something would be addressed though at the site plan.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this?
So you said you had had some calls and some people come by from the surrounding neighborhood.
Yes.
Were they concerned about the fact that there is no fence or what were their concerns?
I think that mainly was just the potential for why C2 zoning could allow the type of uses, concerns, again, I mean, there was some concerns about, you know, if there was something that happened on a commercial use on that property that someone, it could be traffic into their backyards and that sort of thing, certainly that was, was brought up, yes. I think it was primarily just the idea of commercial zoning, you know, behind their homes was that as well as the safety issue was the two primary things.
Okay. Other questions for Kevin? Okay. We will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. And if you could come forward and state your name, address, if you live inside the town limits.
Hi, my name is Mary Adolfson. I live at 800 J Court. Can I use the mouse on here?
Absolutely.
I live at the corner right here.
Okay.
I do have, I was one of the people that came by and spoke to Kevin and he said I could get signatures. We have a lot of neighbors that don't get out, it's a lot of elderly people. Can I pass this?
Absolutely.
Is someone here? I know you weren't out. Oh. I think you were at your houses yesterday. I only hit about 50 people. I had three people who would not sign and their reasoning was that they said they didn't think it was going to make a difference. Everyone else signed. No one knew this was proposed because only a few people got notice. The size of this paper is the size of the sign on the property on Old Nashville Highway. So this is completely residential. There is no commercial right there. I think the C2 down the road, but it backs up to at least eight homes. It's a quiet neighborhood and we just, it will ruin our property values. It will be loud. The entire back half is wooded right now. We were told Dollar General wants to move in. We have six Dollar Generals already. They get robbed. They'll run into our neighborhood. So that's my concerns.
Thank you. Hi. If you'll come forward and state your name and address and if you live inside the town limits.
Good evening, Martinez. I live on 153 Tetter Boulevard, which is the property right behind that where it says R3.
Uh huh.
I have apartments on one side that I've got to deal with. I've been living there almost 20 years. One of the reasons I moved to Smyrna, the fact that it was small, residential, quiet. I'm not against progress. I come from big cities and I think the progress that is happening in Smyrna needs to slow down. That's my opinion. I'm right behind 153 and I'm against this. Like she says, that's all residential. There's plenty of other places that they could build. I think commercial should stay in commercial, residential should stay residential. That's how it started, that's how it should end. Everybody seems to know on Nashville Highway now, they want to turn all their little houses into commercial. I understand, so the value, they're going to make more money, but I believe that commercial should be commercial, residential should stay residential.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Hi. My name is Mark Lee Crawford. I live at 809 J Court, right under R3. I just heard about this a few days ago. I've lived there 17 years and in 17 years, I have fought to keep people from cutting through my yard and my neighbor's yard so they could walk over to Mapco, Walgreens, and Food Lion. I've actually been almost assaulted three times while asking people not to cut through my yard. Thank goodness at the time I was a law enforcement officer for six years and I was able to get distance and show my badge. That was the only thing that stopped me from being assaulted in my own yard from people cutting through. And now if they want to turn that into commercial, another store, which we already have a Dollar General just down on the corner, how many more people are going to come through my yard? After that, finding out that I was law enforcement, I lost a dog from somebody coming through there poisoning him. My vehicle was vandalized. I've had to put cameras up all around my house. I'm against this. Trying to be respectful, I'm upset. Really, I'm upset because I just found out about this two days ago. So it's a safety issue. Will the city write me a check to put a 10-foot fence up around my property? That was just a joke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Hi. My name's Tammy Meyer. I live at 149 Tetter Boulevard in Smyrna. I can't really see my house on there, but I have my backyard and my side yard is right directly in the back of Mr. Davis's property. We bought our house in 1992, so we've lived there several years. We've already had, like if a police stop somebody on Old Nashville Highway, they try to run through to our yard. But there is a wonderful, wonderful tree line that has grown up. All the tree trunks are on Mr. Davis's yard. And our yard is all foliage. And, you know, it does give a buffer and keeps the silence down from Old Nashville Highway. I mean, and if they put businesses down, you know, they're going to put the dumpsters in the back, so does that mean we're going to have rats in all our yards? We don't want it. We just, we don't want it. I mean, I don't want to get in my pool and have a parking lot in my backyard. I don't want those trees tore down and I, I really don't want it commercial. So I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kathy Marsh. I live at 147 Tetter Boulevard. My property backs up, all of my property backs up directly onto this property. When we moved here, we bought into a residential neighborhood. It's residential now. I expected that it would stay residential. It will affect my property values. It does butt my entire backyard in the back of my house. Anything there, I'm going to lose all of my privacy. Also, again, the increased noise. They talk about people crossing through your yard. Since that property has been vacant, we've had several people crossing through the, coming up over the hill and cross the backyard right now. I mean, you clean that out and put a business in there, take down that line, tree line and stuff, I'm a wide-open door. I mean, I can't even open my back door if they build back there because people will be looking right in my house. So I really think that, again, the business area is just around the corner. It's already zoned commercial. There are empty stores in that commercial area. They want to build, build there. I mean, this is my home. It was residential when I moved in. You knew when you moved in, you had a water treatment plant, so you had expectation that it was going to be there. I moved in, it was a residential home. I have expectation that it's going to remain a residential home. And I also echo the other things that have been said here also. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Marsh.
My name is Betty Guthie and I live at 101 Hunterwood Court, which is the subdivision kind of behind this, at the end, turn left on to Tetter and then back into Hunter's I'm concerned about this aside from the fact that my daughter is in one of the homes. The children in that neighborhood are able to play outside with grandparents, parents, older siblings watching them, but they don't have to have total protection. That's not true in a lot of neighborhoods. It's true where I grew up, but it's not true. If you take that away, Mark has been our security guard among, with other people and the trees. You take that away, the children are not going to be able to play outside. The other thing is, I've only lived in Smyrna, my family's lived here for... The other thing is, I've only lived in Smyrna, my family's lived here for several, several years. I've only lived here seven years. This is my third house I owned. Y'all are real close on the line, or we all are. There's a lot of beautiful, expensive homes here. There's not so many solid, middle-class homes that people can afford and are only special people with lots of income. You don't want to get rid of that middle, those middle-class neighborhoods. These people take care of their yards.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against?
I live at 802 J Court, and our property backs up to the Davis property. We've lived there for about 22 years. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was the fact that where it's positioned on Old Nashville Highway, we've already had Dollar General at Rock Springs causing major accidents right there. This is like right at the tip of the hill as you come over from Hazelwood, and I can see potential for there being some major accidents right in there. Because there's another, the little condo areas on the other side is coming out from there as well. So I just wanted to bring that up too.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
Fred Mitchell, I'm the husband of Doris, and just a question, have any of y'all gone out there and looked at this area? Y'all been out there and looked at it? Apartments on one side, houses everywhere. Children play out there. My truck's been broken into twice. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Anyone else to speak for or against? If you'll state your name, address, if you live inside the city limits, and if you're here representing a business or organization.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Monty Turner at 223 Burlington Place in Nashville, Tennessee. I'm the proposed, or the developer for the proposed project, and I appreciate the concerns of all the neighbors and residents. I do want to make sure everyone knows, I would say approximately 80%, I have my engineers here as well, 80% of that tree buffer that exists now will remain in place, and I would be happy to install a privacy fence on those borders as well. There won't be any light pollution over the property lines, and the way we have our proposed development situated, I think we've got anywhere from 40 feet to approximately 80 feet of distance off the property lines from our improvements, either building or parking lot. And happy to answer any questions, or, again, my engineers are here to answer any specific engineering questions.
Your Dollar General that's several hundred feet down the road, what's the reason?
It's a little bit smaller than...
Could you expand it?
The relocate, no, sir. This is a relocation site, so that store will close. I'm pretty sure that's owned by an individual, a private property owner. Dollar General does not own that. It could be they couldn't renew their lease at that location. I don't get into those details, but it will be a relocation site, and they'll close that store that exists now. Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't use my, all my three minutes, could I say?
You may come back up and state your name and address again, just for the record.
Yeah, what would keep us from putting up light posts?
If you'll...
Fred Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you.
A little Smyrna, and this is gonna be right in my backyard. I care less what he says. Nothing fazed me at all. What's gonna keep us on my property, putting up telephone poles and shining lights into their business 24/7, as long as it's on my property?
You still have to get a permit.
Well, we can do that. Blast music 24/7.
There's someone else that'd like to come speak for or against this item? You may come forward, state your name and address.
Martinez, 153 Tetter. I have a question for the gentleman. He just said that one relocation, the big motive is because that place is too small and they didn't renew the lease. So what exactly, because I'm new to this too, I was not informed about this until recently. So what are the, what actually you trying to do is a bigger dollar store in there?
About approximately 1,000 square feet, yes, sir.
1,000 square feet, bigger. So what's the total of square feet for that property you're gonna build?
The square footage of their existing building, I believe, is roughly 8,000 square feet, and we're proposing a 9,000-foot building.
I guess my next question would be, what's the purpose of building one in this corner when you already have a brand-new one on the other corner, which is near Old Nashville Highway? That's the one on... Don't you think that, don't you get like certain regulations that you could only build one like miles away from each other? I mean, that's, that's not even a mile from Old Nashville Highway to where we are. It's exactly one mile if you measure it.
We did build another one to the west.
Well, Mr. Martinez, I was gonna say, I'm happy for you to talk to Mr. Turner outside, but that's not going to affect the decision that we make.
Well, it should affect the decision because you're the one who passed the permits.
I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I'm sorry that you feel that way, but if you want to talk to him outside, you're more than welcome to do that. Is anyone else here who'd like to speak for or against this item?
Totally against it.
Mark Crawford again. Just a quick question. He said he was willing to put up privacy fence. I will tell you this, if you put up privacy fence around there, it will not stop them from walking around like they have been doing for 17 years through our property. There's gonna have to be fence all the way across to that drainage ditch and down alongside to keep them out of our properties. There's two properties right there, like I said, right where R3 is on your map, and the one next to, which they've been approached to sell part of their easement to these people. So, putting a property fence around that highlighted area is not gonna stop them from coming through our yards. I can tell you that for sure. Because there's already that line of trees right there that they will cut through, or they will step over the garb rail and walk through our yards.
But we can only require them to put a fence on their property?
I understand. I'm just letting them know that they're still gonna come around that fence into our yard.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
For whatever reason, you build, I'm Betty Goffey, little space, a little bit bigger space in the new store, mess up our neighborhood. I think there's a bigger issue to look at here. The bigger dollar stores usually have bigger markets, okay? Now, I don't know you all, I know somebody who knows the mayor, but that's all I know. But everywhere I've come and lived, people are loyal to their small businesses that are there. If this brings in a bigger, more groceries, and I'm not gonna say I've never had to buy grocery stuff at dollar store, but I try not to now that I'm older, because it's cheaper not to, do you get the sale somewhere else. We're very loyal to Food Lion, okay? That's a big, important, small business in this, in our part of the community anyway. I think you need to look at the impact this is gonna cause on the other small businesses that are in our neighborhood, okay?
Thank you.
I have one more thing.
Sure. If you'll come and state your name and address, please.
Tammy Meyer, 149 Tetter Boulevard, Smyrna. So that place is on a well, correct?
Subseptic system running.
Yes. But, and you'll have to pay to get sewer and hook up to the sewer on that place?
We have to run approximately 80 feet.
You have to make public water and set up real plans to meet the city standards.
So why not pick a property that already has all that?
That, that's not ours to get into here with this. So, but you're happy to have that discussion out there, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
Hi. I'm Kathy Marsh, 147 Tetter Boulevard. I just have a question. I mean, you changed this from residential to commercial. It kind of sets it up for the next place to eventually go commercial, and the next place to go commercial, where are people gonna live in Smyrna if everything is commercial? I mean, you've already got a nicely established neighborhood. You've got commercial zoning on both ends of the road within a mile and a half, three miles, whatever. Why do we need commercial in the middle of my neighborhood?
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
My name is Michael Tackett. I live at 101 Airview Drive. I'm not gonna get into the question and answer.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that the council is not setting kind of a standard, a precedent, a habit of just commercializing everything that pops up, because what you're gonna end up having, and I don't know, you know, what the situation is with, you know, I don't understand how 1,000 square feet, you know, 100 by 100, or, am I right, my math right? No, 100 by 10 feet addition is, is, is so important that we need to commercialize another property and build another building, possibly vacating a building. We've got a Jack-in-the-Box, the weirdest-looking building in the entire town, been vacant forever.
Oh, it's filled now.
It is.
So you know.
Thank the Lord. And what's going in there? I mean, because I missed the Jack-in-the-Box. Love Jack-in-the-Box, man. But I just want to make sure the council is aware, that's, that's why we moved to Smyrna, is for that small town feel, and I get the progress. I actually might be in favor of the quarry now, you know, after I know that, first of all, there's already quarry out there, you know? But I just want to make sure that, you know, that, that the council is taking into consideration, would you be willing to commercialize a property right next to your own home? And if you're willing to do that, you know, as we have entrusted you with that authority and power, if you're willing to do that, then, you know, I was, you know, impressed that you're living next to the treatment plant. I would've never bought that place. I don't care how cheap it was. But I just want to make sure that you're thinking about that, thinking about, okay, would I do this if it was me sitting there? Is this, you know, not just, you know, if it were bringing in a whole new business, you know, other than Dollar General, I get it. But whenever you got another, you know, you're moving one Dollar General 500 feet across the road to the other, you got one a mile down the road, then we got a vacant building. I just want to make sure that the council is taking that into consideration, that it is important to us homeowners. And I live at 101 Airview Drive. My house backs up to a giant cotton field. I have the most beautiful sunset every morning. And I told my wife when we bought it, that's why we bought it. But I told her, I was like, that's gonna get built on, make no mistake. You know, it's, you know, the, Mr. Fitzwater who, who sold it to us said, well, it's, the owner said it's not gonna get built on in his lifetime. I'm like, well, forgive me, sir, I'm concerned about my lifetime. And I just want to make sure that y'all are taking everything into consideration when you're commercializing these properties, which seem to be one after another after another.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? I will close the public hearing, and, oh, sorry. Okay, sure. If you'll come forward and state your, if you'll state your name and address, and if you live inside the city limits of Smyrna?
Yeah, we live in Smyrna. My name is Bo Campsey. I live at 804 J Court, which we share the most property with what's gonna be developed. I know my yard is full of rock. If construction does take place there and it's zoned commercial, is there a city ordinance or anything like that about noise, blasting, rock hammers, all that stuff? I know Dollar Generals go up fast. I've worked on a couple of them myself, and they're usually up pretty quick, but for whatever duration the construction takes place, it'd be nice not to have blasting and rock hammers and all that stuff going all the time.
In regards to blasting, that is a regulation by the state. The town of Smyrna does not regulate that. We do have a noise ordinance. I don't know if this site will require blasting or not, and I don't even know if...
We also have the construction times that they can build.
That they can and can't.
So the fact that will be zoned commercial and right next to residential neighborhood, that's the, the city ordinance or whatever will still...
Absolutely. Absolutely. All that will still be in place. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then I will close this public hearing and go to the council.
Well, I'll chime in here. One of the things that I wasn't aware of, you know, we had more people speak against this tonight than we did a rock quarry, so kudos to the neighbors for getting together and getting these signatures together and coming out and voicing your opinions, because had you not done that, I don't know what decision you'll make, but I think it matters. So, I sit on the planning commission, this is something the planning commission looked at, and I heard a couple of you say we had no idea this was coming through, so, and I appreciate that comment. We do our very best to try to get word out there, some letters sent out, but oftentimes it doesn't reach out far enough. So, with that said, the other side of me looked at this from a planning perspective, and I said, okay, it's a business on a five-lane highway, and at some point, whether this takes place or not, you know, the property owner, Mr. Davis, will have the ability, and if he wishes, he can take it out there for something different, you know? And so, just understand, I heard the gentleman that served our country, thank you, sir, I heard him talk about his view of the cotton field, and for those of you who don't know him, the business I'm in is the real estate business. I always tell people, many times, I said, if you don't like the fact that that can change, you better own it, because the people that do also have the same ability and have the same right to sell their property for what they could see is their highest and best use. I want to thank everybody that spoke, because it made me think about some things that I wasn't aware of until you came forward tonight. So I'm just gonna leave it there, and let the council discuss that.
One thing that I wanted to mention, Mr. Tackett actually said it, but I actually do look at every one of these requests and imagine if my house was sitting beside it, what I do. I have actually voted and stated that on this council before and said I'm voting against something because I wouldn't want it next to my house. So that's exactly the perspective that I take. Now, that being said, I live right next door to Walmart. I live in the Cobblestone subdivision. There's a privacy fence between my house and Walmart, and we really don't have any noise, we don't really have any problem with it. I will tell you, when I bought it, I was skeptical. My wife wanted to live in that neighborhood, and we moved in there knowing Walmart was there. So I made that choice. But since we've moved there, I've been there 19 years, and you don't even know it's there. You go in my neighborhood, it's very quiet, it's very peaceful, you never know it's back there. So just because there's gonna be a commercial property next door does not necessarily mean that it's gonna be awful. Now, that being said, the other piece of me is that the reason I moved in that subdivision was because I got a 2,200-square-foot house on a half-acre for about $20,000 less than anything else I could find in Smyrna at the time. I believe it was because it backed up to Walmart. So to the property value comments that a couple people make, I happen to agree with you. I do believe that if a house backs up to that property, it may be harder to sell and harder, maybe less value for future, because that was the reason I bought the house I bought, was it was less value or less money. So I just wanted to state that, that that's exactly how I look at things. And initially, I looked at it as, I'm okay with Walmart next door, so I was okay, but I hadn't considered property value. It is too close to Walmart some days.
I have to stay close to Walmart.
Other comments or questions?
I just want to say I do appreciate everyone actually coming up and voicing their concerns, because, like Mark, had, had we not had you come and say those things, we would not know that the community was concerned, and we had had the first hearing, and there were, there were no people to have come and spoken. So thank you for taking time out of your schedule this evening to come out.
Jeff, just for, for everyone's knowledge, talk a little bit about when we do have a zoning change like this, when the letters go out, when the signs go up, or Kevin, you can probably speak to it as well, and who the letters actually go to.
Well, yeah, I think I probably can, because our department's who handles that. We put the sign up, it's not a giant billboard. We, we don't pay for those, we just buy the smaller, real estate-sized signs. And we do, we send letters to, what we try to hit is everybody who joins and everybody who's across the street. We do send them to, if they're presented to the house address, and we also, if, if we see from the property assessor that the owner doesn't live there, we try to send it to the owner, because that happens sometimes certainly too. And then, of course, we obviously, we are, what we're actually required to do is put the notice in the newspaper, which Ms. Waldron puts that in at least 15 days prior to the public hearing.
Um...
It's also on the website.
Yes.
On Channel 3, you want the planning commission to...
You got it, planning commission, you got it at the first reading. It's also on the website.
Yes.
On Channel 3, the planning commission.
You've got it at the first reading. So those are also going to be on the websites as well as on television.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? Do I have a motion?
I think I was the one from planning commission who initially decided we try to move this forward, because I didn't think there was any opposition to this at all. But I've changed my mind, and I'm going to vote to deny this request.
So have a motion to deny?
I'll second that request.
Have a second.
So can you state the reason for denying the motion?
Well, the reason I'm denying is because of the neighbors' concerns for commercial product backing up their properties.
So have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item a is also a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group B, Parcel 29.00, containing approximately 55 1/100ths of an acre. It's requested by Justin Grandstaff to go from R1 to C4. The property is located at 400 Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property. It is at 400 Hazelwood Drive. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R2, C2, and C3. Land use plan would support a downtown mixed-use type development here. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, it is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll state your name, address, and if you live inside the town limits, please.
Mayor Jerome Dempsey, 1009 Rosemont Terrace. Taking my engineering hat off, we have a business right on the corner of Hazelwood Drive and Enid Springs. And I know the C2 property, Carlot, was already rezoned, and the council and the planning commission didn't have much choice on what came in there. It's a permitted use, but I'm kind of curious of what's going to go in on this property and how it fits in with the overall historic area of Hazelwood Drive tying into Front Street and everything. I'm just kind of curious.
Great, thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. Kevin, can you address Mr. Dempsey's question?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, this is a C4 zoning. The business he referenced is C2. So this use, that use would not be allowed here, or similar type use. This is a neighborhood commercial zoning. The proposed use, it's my understanding, is some sort of salon, like a hair salon, is what the initial proposed use is.
It could be an engineering office, couldn't it?
It certainly could be an engineering office. Could also be any type of professional office, insurance office, real estate, that type of thing, or smaller retail-type uses certainly. Like I said, my understanding of proposed use, at least initially, is a hair salon.
Great. Comments or questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion from council?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Whew, we're finally to new business. After what, two hours? It's a long meeting tonight. Okay, we will move to new business. Our first item is our planning commission report, and our first item under planning commission report is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of Parcel 19.01, containing approximately 24.81 acres. It's requested by Tim Burns on behalf of John Burns. The property is located at 3791 Rock Springs Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and council. This is an annexation request for a portion of a parcel. It is, as highlighted in yellow on your map, there's 24.81 acres. Land use plan would support a low-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3, and as well as the Gwin Farms, PRD in town, NRM in Rutherford County. This is, does allow it in our water service area, so the town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Is this the parcel with the gate, that has two gates, a fire gate as well as a private drive?
There is a drive that goes up to, there's three or four houses that are served off that private drive. We're not annexing any of those houses with this annexation.
Okay.
This is an undeveloped portion of the property.
Yeah, the proposed road improvements for the Gwin property doesn't come that far up, does it?
It does not. It comes up to their property line, yes.
Other questions for Kevin?
Yeah, what about the strip right between the PRD we've already annexed and this one? Is that part of the parcel that's kind of triangular shaped to the south, or is that...
It's, yeah, there is, this is a large tract of, I can't remember, 80 to 100 acres, something like that. The area at the bottom there, the R3 area, that was, is a part of this tract as well that will be served from the development on the south. As a part of that approval, I think when their preliminary plaque came in, the planning commission did require them to, you know, any future sections would have to have this entrance off of Rock Springs Road at some location. And so I think this is just kind of in response to that.
I got you.
Possibly beginning that development on the north side as well, moving south. All the parcel basically east of the Gwin Farms development, all the way to Montgomery Way, that's not built. All of that is really one parcel, except for there's a couple of smaller tracts there. It's all one track and one owner.
I want to point out something that, I had a conversation today with Fire Chief. This is just for zoning purposes today on this tract, and something we need to be cognizant of as we go forward, when this tract comes in for subdividing and those kind of things. We've got some real concerns about being able to get apparatus into the property based on the topo and some other things. So we need to make sure that we're taking a hard look at that.
Right.
Where that time comes.
It certainly require a bridge over the creek, as well as some...
I know there's a gated entrance now that serves the two houses behind this property. This will have a separate entrance to Rock Springs?
That is my assumption. Since they didn't annex that drive, I'm assuming they're looking at a new roadway, a new entrance.
We just need to be, like I said, recognize that when the development comes in.
We would also be looking at Rock Springs at that point as well.
Sure. I think, yeah, if you're looking at, with the overall development of this whole tract is, would be, it's not quite as large as Gwin Farms, but you certainly could have a pretty significant number when you look at the total number. And you might have to look at that certainly.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussions? Obviously, the comments Brian made will be definitely taken into consideration at the time.
Sure, absolutely.
They need to be. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Second item under planning commission report is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 53.00, 54.00, 55.00, and 56.01. The on Tax Map 55, Parcels 29.01, 31.00, 31.01, and 31.02, and Tax Map 73, Parcel 14.00, containing approximately 66.79 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R3 to PRD. The properties are located on Rocky Fork, Ambelville Road, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request. These parcels are all pretty within the town limits. It's about 66.79 acres. The proposed development is about 2,000 feet southeast of the intersection of Morton Lane and Rocky Fork, Ambelville Road. Land use plan would support medium-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of PRD in town, being the Amperton and Cedar Hills PRDs, and then RMM in Rutherford County. The proposed, but is for a 204-lot, single-family residential development. Access will be from Rocky Fork, Ambelville Road in two locations, as well as there would be an extension of Anis Drive into and through the northern part of this development. Did include the pattern book that is proposed, which includes the layout utilities, et cetera. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval with just a couple of conditions. One, the minimum house size in the development will be 1,600 square feet. I believe it's about 1,400 is what was shown in the book. And then Antique Avenue is a county road, that is an existing county road, that is also dead ends into a portion of this property. And they did recommend approval of this without that being extended. So I just wanted to spell that out as well. And that's all that I've got.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Is this the subdivision that they said could go up to 3,800 square foot homes?
I believe that's the next one.
That's the next one, okay. Sorry. Kevin, is the design that they've provided us here, the 204, when we went from 1,400 to 1,600 square feet, is that still 204, or is the 204 changed?
It's still 204 lots. Yeah, the number of lots did not change, just the minimum house size changed.
Kevin, would this fall under an R3 if it was conventional zoning?
With this, the acreage and all, yes, it would be very similar to what would be developed with an R3, you know, 10,000 square foot lot minimum, but with no open space.
I guess I've got something to say to the council. A little bit more than a year ago, we talked about taking a look at the subdivisions that were coming in, and most of them that were going from Rocky Fork and over toward Rock Springs and Cooks Lane and such as that. And we talked about wanting something a little bit different, a little bit bigger. And since that time, I believe we probably have approved six or seven PRDs, Kevin, with, I'm going to say a total of well over 2,000 homes. And it's cookie cutter, y'all. Over and over, it's just cookie cutter. That's what we're getting. We've got some that are on the books right now that we can't even, that can't, the, excuse me, the developer can't start on for two years because there's not water out there, but, you know, here we sit approving this stuff. And I've thought about this a whole lot. I mean, it kept me awake a couple of nights, as a matter of fact. And I, I just believe that, you know, we sit back and we say, okay, this is what people want these days. Two-car aprons on the front of the house, no lot to speak of that the kids could go play ball in. Those kids are going to grow up, they're going to have more cars. I just feel like we're doing a disservice to the future, way down the road, that what we're looking for, for our town in that area, and this is some of the most beautiful countryside, I mean, that we have left. Of course, and I hear the argument, well, nobody can make any money. And I'm not sure that the citizens are smart enough to care whether the developers make any money or not. I believe they're more interested in the quality of life. And here we go with just packing in density here. And, you know, I just, and that's all I've got to say, except for the fact that I'm going to vote for this one, because I feel like it's too far down the road. But I looked at the next one, and the next one has townhomes in it. And the townhomes make me even more uncomfortable than these houses do. And I just urge the council to take a look at the future and what they want for the rest of our area that's to develop in Smyrna. You know, we're, as has been said tonight, we only have so much property that's going to develop. And I think it behooves the council to look at, excuse me, what we're going to be leaving for our, the next generations.
And I don't disagree with you. My only concern is to build that type of home on the property that's left, are we pricing out? It's like the lady said that was here, you know, middle class. Are we pricing out those ones that could afford homes that are going to have to go on larger lots and that are bigger homes?
You know, Mayor, and actually, I've given some thoughts to that, too. You know, when economists talk about the situation in our country and what's going on, they don't talk about if the bubble bursts, they talk about when the bubble bursts. And that's going to put everything back, and then we go into a phase where correction phase is what they actually call it. And so what we're going to have is a bunch of tightly packed houses, and what I fear is that we end up with Lake Forest.
I don't think that's a fair comparison.
Yes, I said that for drama. I'm a pro.
You have been known to do that before.
When we're looking at these, though, we're looking at masonry exteriors, third-party HOAs, green space. And HG, it's market-driven as far as what people are wanting. They're moving to these homes.
I see the green space, and I think that's a very integral part. And don't get me wrong, I understand the rest of what you're saying there. I think that the product itself is probably a well-built home and such as that. But it's, like I say, it's the density of it all that bothers me more than anything else.
Well, I mean, just to throw Lake Farms out here, come on, we're better than that. Or Lake Forest, I'm sorry.
Lake Farms got some nice yards on that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
We're talking about everybody's neighborhood up here tonight.
I'm putting a rock.
So I agree with some of what HG said, a lot of it, but the one thing that I saw in this design that kind of gives me some pause is the minimum setbacks. We approve, and we have people come to VZA every month asking for setbacks larger than this that we sometimes don't grant. And this is a five-foot setback on the side, that's all that we're requiring. Normally, we would ask for at least eight. So we're making these smaller, we're making these lots smaller and accommodating that. That's a concern. The other thing is that, and I'm not trying to be facetious, but the example of the elevations in our, is not what these houses are going to look like. In every one of these pictures, they're on a half-acre lot or more. I mean, it's obvious that they're showing a yard with trees all around it, but that's not what it looks like when you look at the design. And that, to me, that's a little concerning, because it seems like it's a little misleading. If I don't pay attention and I look through here, I'm like, oh, those look like really nice homes, let's go. But the reality is, that's not what the lot's going to look like.
Other comments or questions?
May I go ahead and stay now, please?
That's why I'm not discussing it. Put that on the record.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. As I said, you know, this one's, it's come a long way, but I'm just asking the council to, in the future, let's take a look at what we're approving. And I guess, for me, I'm giving an explanation of how I'm going to be voting in the future.
And HG, maybe it's time that we sit down outside of a meeting like this in an open forum, obviously open to the public, all of our meetings have to be open, and talk about what do we want? What do we, because here's the thing, those developers can't read our minds. They don't know what we're talking about. And to be honest, I don't know exactly what your, what your vision is, and maybe we need to sit down and talk about those things. Because right now, what precedence has shown, this is what we're okay with. And I think if that's the wishes of this council, and they want to look in that direction so that we can have discussion about what we do and don't want, whether it's setbacks or house size, whatever that is, I think we need to sit down and have that discussion. Also, not sure that that discussion doesn't need to be had with planning commission as well. well. Planning Commission needs to know what the wishes of the council are, so they know how to direct those developers that are coming in. So can we see if we can set that type of meeting up? And are you comfortable facilitating that type of meeting to have discussion about, to pull out, you know, exactly what questions to ask and that sort of thing?
Sure, well, let me think through that part of it, but yeah, certainly, I think we should. If it's something the council wishes to do, I think having a joint meeting with Planning Commission is obvious what we need to do. We do have, we are nearing completion, we got a few little things to finish up on our comprehensive plan. I don't know if that's something we wanna talk about with that or not, or if we wanna have this as a separate thing, but we'll kinda think through that, the best way to do that.
But I think in these discussions, we have to be realistic, and we can't just say, we want bigger homes on these great lots if financially it can't work. I mean, I think we have to be realistic.
I'm disagreeing.
Okay. Okay. So Kevin, you'll get that set up, and we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One, two, one, two.
I think it's four to two.
We're good, Ms. Diane? I had to count, I think. And we have one abstention. Okay. Item three, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 15.00, containing approximately 47.72 acres. It's requested by NVR, Doing Business as Ryan Holmes, on behalf of Sean Collins, to go from R3 to PRD. The property's located at 8916 Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request, yes, it's currently zoned R3. The, it's about 2,200 feet northwest of the intersection with Morton Lane, so it's on the opposite side of Morton Lane, but still along Rocky Fort Campbell Road. Landings plan, again, would support a medium-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is all RM in Rutherford County. Get to the right path, there we go. The proposed PRD is for a development containing 121 lot, single-family lots, and 61 townhomes, for a total of 182 residential units. Access will be from Rocky Fort Campbell Road in two locations. There did, there are no current existing streets that are stubbed into this tracks, there were nothing to connect to, but they do have two stub streets shown to the surrounding property owners, surrounding properties. Again, did include the pattern book, which shows various other details. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition, and this was discussed at the meeting. The minimum house, there's two different widths proposed on the townhomes, one of 22 and one of 28. The 1,500 square foot minimum was a 22-foot townhome, the 28-foot width townhome would be 1,600, and all the single-family homes would have a minimum of 1,600. This is the development that Mr. Short referenced earlier, that does have a range of up to 3,700 or 3,800 square feet would be the range that was shown in the plans. And that's all I've got.
Questions or comments for Kevin on this?
Where's that contiguous to the city?
We, when this was annexed, we actually annexed a portion of Rocky Fort Campbell Road to make it contiguous.
Kevin, I know there's, it seems like there's a big difference between the smallest-sized house and 3,600, 3,800 square feet. Do we really think there'll be some 3,800 square feet homes in there?
Yeah, that's what they're proposing, all the week, and enforces that minimum, though. I mean, we can't, there's nothing in here that says 10% or something like that, it's gonna be above a certain other amount or anything like that. And we talked a little bit about that at the Planning Commission meeting, and just the difficulty in administering that to make sure that that happens from the building permitting and code side. Every development has to have a certain percentage of different-sized homes, it'd be quite an undertaking for the code staff. And so we just, what was recommended by Planning Commission is just that minimum, which is the easiest part. As a, from an administration standpoint, that's the easiest way to do that.
The lot sizes are, what, about 6,000 square feet?
Roughly, a little over 6,000, yes.
Be hard to get a 3,800 square foot home on.
Unless you go multiple, two or three stories, yeah.
I guess I'm just...
The townhomes are kind of in the center part of the development. If you're, they're kind of in this area here.
Other questions or comments for Kevin?
So we're showing one amenity area for the entire project, is that correct?
I think there's one primary, as far as the active amenities, yeah, there's one area shown with a couple of different amenities in there, but there's one area, and then there's just the other, just, there's some detention areas and open space areas as well in other areas, but I think there's one shown as far as where there's actual improvements, beyond just the open space.
Other questions or comments?
How is this proportionally, and I'm making sure this is a good question to what we just looked at, from the number of homes to townhome units?
Sorry, I mean...
Yeah, I was just looking at the last one, or thinking of the last one, it seems like we have more townhome units in this, what's proposed here, and I may have to flip back to the other one.
The last one didn't have any townhomes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The last one was all single-family. This is the only one we have tonight that has the mix. We've had other developments recently that have the mix that have come through. This is, you know, roughly a third townhomes.
A third.
With this, you're roughly a third, because you're about 61 of the 182.
And what have we looked at prior to? This just seems a tad more, as I recall.
There were 204 lots in the other one, this one's 182. And they've only got 18 condos in the first phase. There'll eventually be almost 60 condos.
Yeah, there's 61 proposed.
But 40-something of those are second phase. I also noticed the setbacks, which I was just talking about, are actually larger in this. They're six foot instead of five foot.
They're one foot more, yes.
Questions, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to deny.
The motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor of denial of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item B is packaged liquor board report, there were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C, consideration of a resolution approving funding for nonprofit organizations for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Rex?
Mayor, council? A resolution stating the agency, purpose, and amount must be approved before any funds can be distributed to nonprofit agencies according to guidelines established by the Comptroller of the Treasury of the State of Tennessee. And obviously, during the budget process, we allocated money for nonprofit organizations, and this would allow us to go ahead and cut the checks. We're asking for your approval.
Questions for Rex on this? Something we have to do every year. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
I think Jerry motions all second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, consideration of a resolution to reimburse expenses for a future debt service. Rex?
Yes, ma'am, another housekeeping measure, hopefully. The 2020 fiscal year budget planned for financing several capital projects with bonded debt, I included a list of projects we budgeted to be financed with debt proceeds. We will have expenditures related to these projects before the issuance of the debt. The resolution will allow the town to legally reimburse itself for these expenditures when the debt proceeds become available. Obviously, these are all water and sewer projects. We would prefer to use the revolving state loan funds, but in the instance of where we don't have enough, can secure enough funds from them, then we would have to go to the bond market.
Questions for Rex on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We now have an appointment of one member of the Sister City Committee to serve an unexpired term ending in 2022. This is an appointment that I make and is confirmed by the council. We have had three applicants, Ruben Gomez, Wendy Wesley, and Nikki Hall. I asked Jerry, since he chairs that committee, to look at these as well as talk to his committee, and Jerry, did you all have a recommendation?
Yes, Mayor, I have actually spoken to several, and the group would like to nominate Ruben Gomez.
Okay. So I will nominate Ruben Gomez, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Gomez, you are now a member of the Sister City Committee to serve an unexpired term ending in 2022.
I just wanna add right there, Mr. Gomez had kids that went through the program, so this is an example of someone giving back after their kids participated. And I'm really glad to see him volunteering, stepping up to do this.
So he knows about the fundraising?
He does. He does. And that was some of the reason for the ones that had sent me some information, thought that that would be a good choice.
Great. Okay. Item F is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Title 15 Motor Vehicles Traffic and Parking, Chapter 1 miscellaneous of the Town's Code of Ordinances specifically pertaining to prohibited use of wireless communication devices, and this is a first reading, we're with the new hands free.
Yes, Mayor, council, as everyone I'm sure is familiar with the new state law that went into effect on July the 1st. We dealt with this with the moveover law as well. In order for our officers to cite them to municipal court, we must adopt municipal version of the state law, otherwise they have to carry these to criminal court. So that's why moving to adopt an ordinance that basically mirrors the state's law, you will see some renumbering and also the fines. As you notice in here, just to get it removed before we could switch it over, but our maximum fine is $50 for municipal court under state law. But that'll be about the only thing that you can see change, but that's the purpose of this.
I will tell you, over the last couple of days, I have had to catch myself, I go to grab my phone, and I'm like, ooh, I can't do that now. And so I have to be very careful, and maybe I'm the only one, but...
You're not.
Yeah.
I think there doesn't seem to be bothering you.
Right. But I hope for all of us, it becomes a habit of not picking that phone up and using that phone, because I do think it makes it all a safer place on the road. So do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Jeff, I think you have something under other tonight?
Yes, this is just, you have, before you have settled an agreement in one of our condemnations, this is for track, I say one of, it's four different tracks, 31, 33, 34, and 35 of the Enid Springs road expansion. And this will, was the only outstanding condemnation that we had, and this would settle that. The only thing that may change is 5F, which is just dealing with riprap, we just have some language that, working back and forth, but because the construction phase that we are trying to start that, I wanted to go ahead and bring this before you outside of 5F and get the council's approval.
So do you want the motion with the authority to let you do 5F as to how it needs to be done?
That would be great.
So do I have a motion with approval and allowing council to wording of 5F? How do you want that? With wording of...
Just approval of the settlement agreement and final release with also the authority to negotiate 5F.
There you go. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
That motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Jeff and Brian, we appreciate all the hard work on this, as well as the work that went in prior to Brian getting here of bringing this to fruition, so thank you. Anything else under other? This has been a marathon meeting tonight. Ms. Diane, anything tonight?
I have nothing.
Brian?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have just a couple of things. One is an issue that came to light this past week by a citizen of the community, and I think it warrants us sharing some information, and believe it or not, it has to do with feral cats and the issue of feral cats in our community. PAWS has a process of dealing with feral cats that I need to make sure that the community is aware of. In the past, the feral cats were collected and euthanized, and they have now developed a new process that's called Trap-Neuter-Release, TNR. In this program, what they basically do is come into an area that has an issue with feral cats that are brought to their attention by a citizen, they come in, collect the cats, they take them, spade them, neuter them, give them the shots, and then they bring them back to the area which they were collected and re-release the cats. The reasoning for this, as I've learned today, doing my due diligence on feral cats, the mayor's getting tickled at this, is the feral cats will stay in an area because there is a resource there for them, mainly food. If you take the cats out, more cats will come in. By taking them away and neutering them and bringing them, putting them back into their environment, what they're seeing is a decrease in the total number of feral cats out in the community, because now they've been spayed, neutered, and given their rabies shot. Although this is maybe not something that everybody appreciates, that is the process that PAWS has employed through their system. They're seeing a reduction of about from 60% to 5% since this has been implemented. They do recognize that not all citizens are thrilled over this program. Many, though, are open to the idea once it's explained to them. They still have, still have some that are concerned, and they're looking to find places to put cats in barns. Different opportunities to deal with these cats.
I've got several ideas, but I'm not gonna bring any of them up.
I'm trying to get through this, okay? This is information our community needs. And what they shared with me today is that anybody that would like to pursue other deterrent matters and opportunities, methods with the feral cats are welcome to call PAWS direct at 615-878-7740, extension 2109, and talk to Michael Gregory. We will get that on our Channel 3 to have information relevant to feral cats to our community. But it is a operation of the county, not the town. We do not operate PAWS, it is separate to the county. Thank you for allowing me that moment to get through that. A couple of other things, very quickly, I wanted to share with you.
It's about YouTube censorship.
I just wanted to point out, you know, last year I was the new town manager, I've been here over a year now, so I'm no longer the new town manager. But one of the first days I was on the job was the Fourth of July event. And we've just, again, finished a great Fourth of July event, there's some pictures up on the screen, and I just wanted to make sure that the citizens know, these projects and these programs don't just happen, there's a lot that goes into them. And I wanna just reach out and say thank you to the Fire Department, our Police Department, our Parks and Rec Department, and also our Streets Department for all the work, everything from setting up stages and ordering the fireworks and making sure that they're, you know, done safely, to the police officers that stop traffic, and the Streets Department that set up the traffic flows for ingress and egress out of the park once this happens. It's phenomenal to watch the work behind the scenes. And, you know, what's really interesting is, is this is July's program. We have almost every month, something going on like this that contributes to the quality of life of our town. We heard people talk about... We heard people talk about that tonight and some of their comments about the quality of life. Makes me very proud to be part of this team and see the work that goes into an event like the Fourth of July, and so thank you to everybody involved. Next, we have seafood night coming up at the Event Center. That's going to be July the 26th between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. at Smyrna Event Center. Everything from shrimp cocktail to oysters on the half shell to catfish and peel and eat shrimp, and the list goes on and on. There will be a non-fish item on the menu. I think there'll be some chicken fingers or something for those folks that don't like to participate in the seafood side, but it's a great event. It's $19.95 per person, children 6 to 12, $10.95. Please make your reservations. Walk-ins will be accepted, but they may have to wait. We have over 250 reservations already for this. And as we get closer to the event, we, last time we filled up with over 500. So if you don't have your reservations, please make those reservations as soon as possible. The last thing I wanted to mention, there's a picture on the screen. Some of you know this gentleman personally because you've probably been pulled over by him, or you've been given the opportunity to sign one of his autograph opportunities. Some of you may even been in the back of one of his cars at some point in your life. Mayor, not calling anybody out, but we did have an officer, James Bailey, over 40 years of service to our community. He did retire this past week. I was honored to be able to go down and say goodbye and let him know how much I appreciated working with him over the last year. But this is his family with the chief. If y'all don't recognize chief, he's the one in the red shirt. I don't know what, how that happened. They didn't bring him a t-shirt. Even the baby had a t-shirt. But James Bailey did retire, and we're going to miss him, but we do appreciate his 40-plus years of service to the community. With that said, I am done talking about feral cats and retirements. Thank you, mayor.
And just for point of clarification, I did not have to sit in the back of the car. Just so you know.
Eli, to ride it from.
Wasn't going to go there.
No, actually, we got to drive our own car to the police station, but we won't get into that. Thanks for your very informative presentation. We appreciate that.
I'm sure I'll hear about this for a long time.
Jeff?
I was thinking for a nominal fee, I could bring Jacks out to rid you of it. No animals be hurt during the process. That is all.
That's all, good. Okay. Raquel?
Just to reiterate what Brian said about the Independence Day celebration, it was great. Thank you to all the departments who took part in that. And I don't know if we're going to talk about the court review today?
I was going to.
Okay, then I'm going to leave it alone.
Okay. Then that's it. HG? Tim?
I have so many things to say, but I'm going to pass tonight. Thank you.
Jerry?
Okay, I got a few things.
Did they deal with cats?
Well, actually, I got a feeling that that is going to go viral on YouTube. I really do. The Fourth of July was the first one that I have been to in ever, because we're always in Florida the week of the Fourth, so I've never been to one, and it was, it was amazing. I just, thanks to everybody that worked on that. We really had a great time. I want to say happy anniversary. My wife and I are having our 34th anniversary this Saturday. I'm going to take her someplace nice, because I got a real good coupon, and so we're going to celebrate on Saturday.
The new restaurant at Jack in the Box is good.
Okay, all right. I don't have a coupon for that, though. When this meeting started, we had a newborn, but I don't know if it's newborn anymore, but I would like to say congratulations to my son and his wife. Davis Truman was born on last Monday, and everyone is doing good. Everybody will be calling him Davis, except myself, and I'll be calling him Truman. But I do want to say congratulations to them. Me and his grandmother are very excited.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Steve?
The only thing is, congratulations to Officer Bailey. I also am a friend of his. I actually sold him a camper one time, so, but congratulations. It's 40 years of service is, honestly, he's one of those guys that you, if there was something going on in the town, you always knew he was going to be there. So it's going to be kind of odd not seeing Officer Bailey at some of these events, but hopefully he'll still get out as a citizen this time.
Our 30-year reunion, Raquel Stevenson, is coming up. I will guarantee you, his name will be brought up at our reunion. What do you bet?
I bet so. Well, it's close he leaves his head, comes at home.
So, he was a large part of a lot of our experiences here in Smyrna.
Yes.
Anything else? Mark?
Happy birthday to Noah, my one-year-old grandson. And other than that, I have nothing else.
Chief, the addition of the grand finale of the fireworks was wonderful. I heard more people comment on it, so I think it was a nice addition. You know, we've talked about how important the, our employees are, and they do a great job with Independence Day celebration, and, you know, they're out doing the hard work so we all can have a good time. But I also want to thank the citizens. We have very few incidences. I mean, we may have a few little bumps here and there, but overall, they do a great job when we have events like this. And I just want to tell them how much we appreciate what you do when you come out to the events to help make them special. I looked around when I left that night, and, you know, trash was being picked up. There was some we had to, but for the majority, people take pride in our community and they take pride in those events, and so I appreciate all of the citizens as well. Today, we had a special called meeting at the Event Center around lunch for a review of our court system. And I think we got some really important numbers. I think we looked at trends across the country of what are taking place in regards to collection of fees and that sort of thing. And I think Brian and his team have come up with a really good plan over the next year to see what can be done to move us in the right direction in regards to our court system. Many of the things that are happening nationwide are things that are out of our control. And so what we want to do is get a handle on those things that are in our control and look at making some changes. We are going to be having update meetings on the court system. That'll be special called meetings so that we can get a handle on what do we need to do moving forward with our court system. So, is there anything else, council or Brian, that you want to add in regards to that?
I'd just say, you know, it took a lot of us to get the presentation together today. We really tried to strive to hit all the aspects of what's going on with the courts and what things we could control, what things we could not control. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Jeff Peach, to Rex Gaither, to Nathan, and then a gentleman that most of you probably won't recognize until today, David Fielder, who did a really nice job for us out of our IT department. And then I also want to compliment our court clerk and our judge for being open and receptive to some of the changes that we're trying to make and being part of the team to say, "How can we minimize and build a quality standard in our court system that helps us maximize, you know, for the dollars that we spend, what we get out of the court system?" So I just, again, it's been a real team effort. It's been a lot of work, and we're still got a lot of work to do as we go forward. You guys heard some of that today, so we'll, we'll be working diligently on that over the next year to try to make some impact.
And I want the citizens to understand, when we look at things like this, we look at how it affects our overall, all of our citizens, our 50,000 citizens we have. We look at how it affects our town employees, and we look at the service it provides, but also at what expense. So those are all things that factor into the decisions that we're making. But we want you to understand that the citizens and our employees are top on our list for when we're looking at things like this. So, anything else from anyone? Nope, nothing else, we are adjourned.